Okay, good night, or good night, wow. Good. The quickest meeting ever. I'd like to call to order the Village of Lansing Planning Board meeting for Tuesday, October 29th to order at 7:02 PM. Very classic, yeah.
It's pretty amazing.
First item on the agenda is the approval of minutes for October 14th, 2024. Those got circulated and people had suggestions. Any other changes people want made?
I made all the changes. You have them there.
If not, I will entertain a motion to approve the October 14th, 2024 minutes. Motion by Pat?
Second.
Let's see where this is going. Second by Lorraine, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next item on the agenda is the public comment period. That's an opportunity for anyone to bring anything up from the public that's not already on the agenda for this evening.
Susan Ainsley reporting in for the Board of Trustees.
Hey, Susan.
Carla's on too.
Also, I'm here as an observer for the community.
Hearing no other comments, I will entertain a motion to close the public comment period.
So moved.
Motion by Lisa, second by Jim, all in favor?
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is the Planning Board discussion of amendments to the Tree Conservation and Planting Law, Section 145-27. So we obviously have been discussing this for the past couple of meetings and we've had some updates in between meetings and I know Natalie made the last round of changes that we discussed at the last meeting and everybody got those copies circulated and their printed off copies? Yes.
With the additions that Lorraine made.
Yes. So I don't know how, I guess maybe Lorraine or Lisa, did you want to discuss anything in particular about them or?
I realize.
The printer's going to sleep.
Oh. Well, I mean, we sent around, if people don't have objection, the only other thing that I noticed was we were not consistent with the language for status of ownership. In one case, we called it ownership status and another, we called it status of ownership. So I thought maybe that one would be just a tiny thing there.
Page six.
The first one was status of ownership and I forget what.
The second one, page six, is ownership status, yeah.
And then the formatting, of course.
Yep.
I don't know if that got corrected.
It did.
Yes, I was gonna say, Lorraine and Natalie, I think.
Lorraine did it.
Oh, yeah, no, I fixed it like two rounds. I mean, I think it sounded.
It's me after the last meeting.
And what, is the language okay that we put in?
The diversity.
Yeah, I think it sounded fine. Did anybody else, did everybody get a chance to look at it and read over it or do you want to go over it while we're here? I thought it sounded, I thought it captured what we had discussed. It was fine, yeah.
Trying to keep it simple.
Yeah, yeah.
Lorraine found some stuff and I will say that sometimes when you go on these other websites, some of the formatting of these other codes is so much easier because of calling and stuff, but when you try to incorporate it, and I guess that's the question I have, is as we go forward, we should keep to the same style just for consistency, right? Okay, until we change a whole bloody thing, right? Okay. And it started to just, this isn't working. So this is what we came up with. So regarding the appendix, we're not going to have this stuff for the tree planting, all of that, until they get back to us and I don't know whether you've researched, do we wait until everything's together?
So you can then incorporate the appendix by resolution, in which case, as long as it's not binding.
Okay.
So just suggestions.
I guess it will be, won't it?
It would be.
Except the.
What about like invasive species, things like that, like, how does that work now?
And what about the?
Because that's kind of like, you can't do this.
Or one of the.
Isn't there like a D E C list?
Well, and I think that's what it's based off of though, right? It's not the village saying, well, we don't like. It is a state thing saying, I don't, I don't know.
No invasiveness species?
It's definitely in the current.
So, okay, so.
So maybe if we.
Listed on the D E C prohibited.
Okay.
So it's a reference as the D E C list.
Okay.
So it should be there.
Yeah, so that's not something that you would have the ability to change.
Right, it's, we're relying on the D E C invasive species list to say, you can't do that here. Everything else, though, I guess really would be a suggestion and we can discuss that.
Guidelines.
Guidelines, people that come up and, and I think all those guidelines play into the, you know, when we talk about different, you know, different things that are deer resistant or grow better or, and I guess people's personal experience here in the village.
So the only other thing was, is appendix J is already part of our code?
Yes, that was in the solar law.
Right, no, I'm talking about the D B H greater than or equal to and shrugs and equals so and so. We had that little, the charts, there was a chart.
Which?
And that was, and all of a sudden.
Is that appendix J?
Well, I think it was. I thought, all of a sudden, I thought, where the heck is that little chart? And couldn't find it. So then I thought it was appendix J of our code, which is at the end of everything, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so I think.
It's appendix H.
And that's a reference on the second page?
Because J was definitely in the solar law.
Oh, J, all right, I got it wrong. So it's appendix H? So it's already part of our code?
Right, that's where, right, the tree, the tree univalia for individual trees will be determined by Table 1 located in appendix H.
So that should definitely still only be amended by local law.
Okay, so we're all set with that and I, oh, okay, yeah, because one of the other things, I came across some interesting stuff, just sort of silly stuff, but for the appendix, when we get the tree planting guide, there were some kind of little rules that, you know, these, mostly extensions sort of said, you have the 10, 20, 30 rule, which is sort of an easy way for people to sort of, it might catch their attention, so we'll just put that as suggested.
I was also thinking, in lieu of an appendix, I mean, these could just be things that the village.
Development guidelines?
Puts on the website, like it doesn't.
I know, but I think if you have it sort of more, more standard, and there was some more of a living document.
Yeah.
Or something. Well, I think a lot of people, if they're really interested, would already do that. I think we're trying to capture the people that don't care.
Where was it that we had discussed, and I know we talked about it at the last meeting when we talked about multi-root trees?
Oh.
Because that's not in that appendix where we're using it to talk about it, but we said, oh, let's reference the D E C guidelines. Where was that?
Oh, for the reference to D E C guidelines?
Yeah.
C B, one B, two.
Okay. Oh, there you go, okay.
I was gonna pose that question when we talked to David and Dan about, I remember making a note about that.
Yeah. That was one of the questions, is how you measure that and, you know.
Right, but I mean, that covers, again, it's kind of similar to the invasive species thing, we're relying on D E C, so that, I thought maybe we would have to update the appendix, but right, I don't think.
I don't think we do.
You're not changing the appendix.
Right.
No, no.
That was kind of my point with that one, okay.
And I just wanted to be sure about that. Okay, so then whatever else we do is just suggestions, it's not a standard, it's a guideline, so that's another.
But we should stay consistent with those as a board when we, when these things come up for development, obviously.
So then, I guess it's like, so are we ready to move this along to?
Did you want to wait until we have the meeting with the landscapers?
Well, that's what I was wanting to do, there doesn't.
Because it's gonna be a while because David, David can't meet with us till early December and then we still have to track Dan down, which I think Emila was gonna help with that.
And I just wonder if.
If there's no rush, really.
I do remember from two meetings ago, though, I think the trustees were hopeful that we would have something to them before the end of the year, yeah, I mean. Do you, do you remember either?
I don't remember, I remember the solar.
I remember there being a discussion there about, because we were talking about solar, that was gonna finish and getting something, you know, to the trustees sooner rather than later about this.
I thought it was just solar.
I don't, I mean.
I thought they were more concerned about solar, honestly.
Yeah, well, and that's.
That's already on its way.
Which is done.
Yeah.
I don't want to spoil it, because the.
No spoiler alert, but.
Susan, do you remember anything in particular?
Well, it's my, was on my wish, my Christmas wish list, you know, to have both of them done.
Okay. I mean, we can wait until, I don't know, it kind of feels silly if we're not going to talk about this at all and we're good pending the discussion with.
The landscaper.
The two landscapers, but does that change anything that's in here or just the appendix?
That's what I'm saying.
If it doesn't change anything in here.
But what if it does?
I think the first time this was done, in order to meet a deadline that people wanted to pass by, and now we're here, less than, maybe a year later revising it, so I don't think there's any rush.
Rush. I would hold off.
And that's fine.
I think.
I mean, if anything, we're only going to keep more restrictive regulations in place while we wait for the revision.
That's right.
It's not like the last time where there's a rush to keep from things happening.
Happening, okay, there's already something in place.
I mean, I wasn't asking, but I don't mind giving my opinion anyway, I would wait.
Mike. Well, I'll, you know, I'll email Rodney and the trustees and just let them know that, you know, we think we're done with it pending a discussion with.
But, yeah, we don't want to have.
The two developers, the two nurseries and folks that we reached out to.
Time to talk about it again in our January meeting and then we'll have it shortly after the first of the year, we'll have it all.
And there's not that much time and the benefit, you know, the benefit of having expert opinion, an expert insight is a big plus.
My only question was, we're, I think that as a board, we only meet two more times before the end of the year and that's fine. We meet because we're gonna cancel the second November meeting, or it's already canceled.
Right.
The one right before Thanksgiving.
Yes.
Or no, maybe.
Did we officially have both of them in December or no? No, the second one in December was New Year's Eve.
Right, yeah, so we're not, not gonna have.
Did you officially cancel the Thanksgiving?
I don't think we did officially cancel.
We were going to and then I think we talked and we said, oh, let's wait and vote on it at this meeting to say whether we cancel it or keep it on there, so.
And keep it, to have a record of it, too.
Yeah, yep.
So both of them, are we gonna?
Well, the Thanksgiving one is, the one before Thanksgiving is canceled, that's already done.
No, the only one we did was the New Year's.
It was the New Year, oh, okay, it was the New Year's Eve one that's done, the Thanksgiving
one, okay. So we'll chat about that under other business tonight.
Cancelled.
Oh, gosh, several meetings ago.
Yeah, I know.
You were probably on Zoom or you weren't.
Yeah, I know it was discussed, I didn't realize it was officially.
Yeah, we voted on that one just as a quick. Most people were gonna be out of town anyway, so there weren't.
Well, for Christmas Eve or New Year's Eve. But we also, then it was November 26th, we're gonna cancel it.
Yes. So that gives us a couple of meetings, Aliyah, Alani and the trustees and just let them know that we think we're settled with it, just waiting for a meeting with a couple of the nurseries we reached out to to finalize some, something, just in case it changes what we're proposing.
So this, whenever we do get that together, this is also gonna replace or update, and I don't know where on the website that one sheet was that was like, obviously put together back in the 70s, where, where was that on there?
What, with the trees?
Yeah, remember the trees?
I don't think it's, I'm not sure it's even in the code.
It's not in the code.
But it's on the website somewhere, right?
Yeah, it's under, if you look at the, not the tree bank, but the tree reimbursement.
Oh, maybe that's, yeah, yeah, that's.
There's, it's referenced there.
Yeah, that's.
That's where it is.
Like if you ask for reimbursement here, guidelines or rules or whatever, you'd have to do.
Here's all the bad trees you shouldn't, can plant now, but.
But it's really outdated, yeah.
And right, if we're updating that.
Yeah, then we can update that too, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Any other comments or anything about this? Next item on the agenda is the trustee report, that was me, I had the link this time, so I did go, it was, it was relatively quick and Natalie's gonna have to fill in two things because one of them I don't remember, but they did do the public hearing for the solar energy law and it was, it was a pretty quick discussion, they closed the public hearing, they voted on it. It was.
Four to one?
Four to one, yeah, the one was a abstained, or abstained, it wasn't a nay, I don't think, I think he just abstained, right?
It said nay.
I think so.
We'd be part of the report. He said it was a nay.
Oh, okay, maybe it was a.
I thought it was a nay.
Okay, maybe it was a nay, but, so it was, it was four to one, yeah.
So who abstained?
Wolfgang.
Wolfgang voted nay, did not abstain.
Voted what?
No.
No.
Oh, voted no.
But other than, there wasn't really, there wasn't much discussion around it, it was.
So there was no reason given why.
He just said in its current.
In its current format, yeah.
Oh.
But, yeah, so that, that was that. I don't recall the, the other agenda item, maybe I missed it because it was quick, appointing Devin Walker to the BCA?
Yeah, that.
I don't know why I missed it.
I think it moved to the top, so he could leave.
Oh, okay, yeah, I missed.
So we had time before the public hearing to do it.
They talked about, and this is the one that I need Natalie to fill me in on because I didn't follow along with it, they had a discussion on, on the exemption limits for low-income senior and/or disability and veteran statuses in the village and there was a little bit about a discussion about, well, if you qualify for one, can you qualify for both? It's one or the other, so.
So New York State recently allowed for the exemption limits to be raised on tax exemptions for disabled people, veterans and senior citizens. Tompkins County recently increased their allowable exemptions for those three categories. So there's a discussion amongst the board of trustees that the village should similarly raise their exemption limits around those three categories. I think their preliminary decided to match the Tompkins County determination and local laws should be introduced at the next meeting for consideration.
These are tax exemptions or what?
Tax exemptions. So I believe senior citizens and disabled persons are subject to the same exemption levels, so you can't be qualified for both of those, but you could have a senior citizens or disability exemption and a veteran's alternative exemption. So the veterans is a different category.
That was the.
So the veterans don't have to be disabled?
No, they do not.
I see, okay.
And then there was a discussion about the supply contract that, you know, the village purchased electricity from, there was a couple of different options in there, but they settled on, and I, and there was a little bit of discussion about, I'm just trying to recall, there were some questions about.
Do I have to go green?
Right, yeah, yeah. Would, would going 100% green be beneficial to the village or not? Not just monetarily, but like, would it be beneficial, yes, no, monetarily, yes, no. So they did decide to, I think, just approve the Hudson.
Hudson fully green for two years.
Fully green, yeah. So and then after two years, obviously, we, it comes back up for.
Renewal.
Renewal and they can, they can judge. It was, it wasn't a very big difference, though, between the 100% green versus what we were previously doing, so it wasn't.
We were previously also doing 100% green.
Oh, right, oh, okay.
Yeah, that's what Tony said.
Okay, so, but the, the cost difference between the options was not big at all, really.
Okay.
And that was, yeah, that's pretty much it, it was so quickly. Next item on the agenda is other business. The one item under that, thanks, Mike, is the review, the special permit checklist, which everybody does have printed off in front of them.
Well, this is.
And you sent it out over email to a little flowchart, Lou.
It's pretty crude, but it's kind of a, you know, whether this is the direction that you wanted to go into, you want something that you could follow along with and then Lisa shared a couple of other items.
But, you know, the thing about this is, this is what I did when I was running the meeting.
Because I've got a copy of it.
Yeah, so that I was sure that we covered all the bases, but I guess one of the things that I think I would like to expand on this about is, is stuff like certain aesthetics things and design and, you know, have they shielded their garbage, you know, when it's a commercial, there are other things that we have that are subsets of a lot of this stuff.
So I think this is, this is one thing.
I like, I like.
Yes, because I, right, I can, I can follow down the, you know, the text piece of the tool, but this is nicer to do a flowchart and check off as you go and it can even be part of the record, that's fine. So if people are okay with this, we can take it and make it prettier. I can do that, don't worry.
You're just trying to make me feel better.
No, I know, I like this. I like graphical version other than just like text.
I love the yes, no.
I forget.
Choices and, you know, stop and go back to, yeah.
But to Lisa's point, the second part of that is, okay, yes, we've reached all the yeses or nos and we're ready to do the resolution and are there things on the resolution that we, it doesn't regularly, like the green practices?
Yeah, exactly.
Should that, like, what's the master list of conditions that we could have put on a special permit? Check off the ones that you want or ignore the ones that are, however we want to approach it, but yeah.
But I think there are things that way back when, from, I mean, I've shared it a million times, it was the very first, what's his name, I went to, the Planning Federation, it was Design Things to Consider and there's a lot of just good stuff to have, you know, the lighting, you know, is it here?
Looks like.
But we sometimes forget stuff and I think if we can have just a, just a checklist.
Pass, two, pass.
Answers this, but.
Well, and it doesn't, it's not part of the actual resolution itself, but at least if there's a, okay, we're ready to move forward at the next meeting, here's a list of all the things that we've, which ones do we want to, right, there's the ones that we always put on every special permit, that's great, but out of all these other, you know, five, 10, 15, however many it is, which ones of these do we want included on the special permit resolution and, you know, what's the consistent language, just the, not that Natalie messes up.
Then landscape plan, and if it's commercial, it's like, the sidewalk, yeah, okay, so if it's sidewalks, do we have to have street trees and, and this is on buffer, you know, like the buffered things, yeah, all that.
And are there things that are conditions, sometimes, not all the time, but if it is sometimes, is it not because we have to waive it, like, okay, are we going to, yes, sidewalks normally would be on there, but we're gonna waive it and at least, that's captured on here on the flowchart, but.
Yeah.
We decided to have a bunch of conditions on a resolution and as it comes up, we can, I can just take those out.
Well, I don't even think you have to put them on the resolution, just like, this is great, I like this, and then a second page just says, here's all the non-standard conditions that we have put on a special permit before.
Which ones?
Which ones do we want to actually end up on the resolution that gets drafted first?
Well, I don't know, may, I don't know, maybe what he says is really the same thing. Safer.
The only reason I say, the only reason I'm going with my idea is, because it's mine too, because.
You can't miss it.
You make, you make that, I understand what you're saying, okay, you figure out, okay, we want to do this, this, this and this, I don't have time to add it to a resolution whereas if I've got the resolution, I can take that and zip it right out.
I was gonna say, I prefer.
So if you just add them all to whatever the template is that you use and then just delete the, you know, here's this new template, take off the ones I don't want, that's fine, yeah, I mean.
So to that point, though, you know, the, the green things that Brent brings up, would you list all of them and then you would just delete them or?
We're not specific on that, we usually do a number, we do two out of four of.
Just say you, they have to decide, so that part would be a little different.
And then it's my responsibility to make sure that they do.
Which two are you gonna do? Have you done the two?
Okay, all right.
Jim?
Yeah, lower right-hand corner.
Yes.
To the left of the word bank, what's that word?
Plan.
Plan.
What?
Plan.
Plan.
The P word, a four-letter word.
I was gonna say, online, I think the whole thing was there and a little easier to read, this part got cut off.
Was, okay.
Can you make it pretty for me?
Yeah, I'll put it into a flowchart for you and I'll even fix it. I don't know if there's any fixing on it.
And then we can, is there anything he left off?
I just haven't waited 30 days for response from GMO.
Wait 30 days, I was.
For the GMO, okay.
GMO.
Is mailings, was mailings in here?
Yes, at the very beginning.
Oh, there, yeah, there you go, okay.
You missed it.
Oh, yeah, there it is, yeah, very first one.
We start with mailings.
Okay. Other comments or thoughts?
No, I think it's good.
So do you need anything, Mike, from us to put on the, I mean, to put on the special permits? I think the one that's least common is the number of green practices one, but it should be.
There's some stormwater practices, I can go on there, I can, I can review, I don't know the exact wording, but there are some other ones we've had on there, I can just put them all on there and get you guys to draft or something.
Yeah, I think that's fine.
Or whatnot, so I'll work on that.
All right, and that's not changing anything, so that's just a, really a reminder for us to make sure we don't skip over something.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other discussion on the flowchart or the, anything that was in here?
Well, it's a great idea, it just lays it out and up there, why don't you?
And that's, right, that's me, that's the, you know, I've gotten this from Lisa, but sometimes if I don't have a pretty picture in front of me.
I only do it so I can check it off at night as we were doing it, but yeah, no, I didn't have time to do a flowchart. I didn't have, I didn't know how to do it.
Even before your thing there, I can always take a crayon and do a little line on it.
Follow the route.
Yeah, follow the route down, here's where we are right now, yeah.
Yeah, because like I'm, I'm thinking about looking at some stuff, for example, once we get to, it's things like signage, all those, just those, that kind of stuff, if we put it up, down, so that we can always say, oh, yeah, no, we did, we've taken care of that, we've taken care of that, that's where the checklist, I think, comes in handy.
Yes, yep.
Okay.
Okay. Other things, other business, Pat?
Are we gonna cancel November 26th?
I'll get to that one in a second.
Okay. Did anyone else see the Ethica Journal?
No.
Of Thursday, I don't, I, I get it in paper, all I usually do is back section, for some reason I picked up that day, the section, and has to do with tax foreclosure lists?
I don't know.
There were a couple of items that were of interest to our Arrowhead Ventures and Waters Sprite, two, it's a company also owned by the same people that own Arrowhead as, or at least one of the parties.
Got it.
So I just thought that was kind of interesting.
Which, which Arrowhead Ventures property was? Because I don't know if it like has the.
Cars sold 47.1-1-17.21.
Can you, Mike?
The 47 would be in the village here.
Isn't that, is that, isn't that ours? Isn't that Lansing Meadows? I meant to look it up, but I didn't.
I don't recall that. I don't recall that.
.21?
Is it on the, is the thing on the map?
You just do Tompkins County.
Oh, I guess I could, I was looking up Water Sprite.
Oh, the Water Sprite, they came to us at one point and it was the property between Chow's and the Chinese Imperial Kitchen.
What's the tax map number?
One is 47.1-1, and then it's 1721 and 1723.
It is that, then, because there's two parcels in that.
1721 and 1723?
Yep.
So that's 2 to 40 Blue Heron Way and 40 Graham Road West.
Okay, and then Water Sprite is 4711, and then it's 1713 and 1715.
That is 85 Oak Crest, that's 4713, you said?
Mm-hmm.
And 15?
No, 40, no, 1713, 1715, with the same prefix, 47.1.
And that's also 2 to 40 Blue Heron Way, so it's listed under, yeah, I don't know. Okay, well.
But, all right, just thought I found that interesting.
Fair.
I'm not sure what it does, how it impacts us in any way, but.
Would that be like something that was initiated from the PD, or the IDA?
No, you pay taxes.
Oh, I wasn't sure if that was like an IDA thing with the pilot stuff or.
I didn't know either whether there was.
I mean, I don't know, but I'm assuming tax foreclosure's showing you don't pay taxes.
Oh, yeah, okay.
I see that, true.
Yeah.
But it may slow things down, I'm not sure we're gonna see anything happening for a while.
Were there's the only two in the village, or is there a lot more in there?
There's a few other, well, they might not be in the village, 19 and 15 tax map. I seem like private citizens, though.
Oh, yeah.
So I'd rather not.
I would say most of them were not commercial.
Yeah, they didn't.
Well, there were a couple others, but it was just kind of weird, I, like I said, I never.
Foreclosures.
Attention, there it was, so I thought, oh, I don't know, we'll see what happens next.
What else, Lisa?
But we haven't heard any more about anything, because the last time we saw him, he said he was working on some stuff, and I thought, oh, maybe.
He's doing aprons down there.
He did?
On the roads, he's doing the aprons, coming out, widening those up, Johnny Corky said he, he thought they were satisfactory.
Oh, good.
Okay.
So we're just waiting on stormwater maintenance agreement review from his attorney.
Okay, so things are going, moving along.
For John to look at the easements.
A question, is something gonna be happening with the old building with the drug and alcohol?
I don't know.
Reason I asked, I was reading a recent issue of the Ethica Times, and there was an article in there, I think, about mental health services or something with the county, and it looked like it's something, they were making reference to that, that location, because they mentioned about how the drug and alcohol place had closed abruptly, and I didn't really read that art, this article that closely, but it, it sort of sounded like that this other program might be looking to move in there.
Cars. Cuba Medical's putting up the money, they've got the funding and, but it'll, it'll be Cars, Cars is the, I don't know what Cars stands for, but it's the addiction facility that's up off of.
Cuba.
Harriet City Road on 221, is it, anyway, they would run the facility because they obviously have the licensing and staff, whatever, but I haven't seen anything, I mean, the Ethica Voice did the story about Cuba Medical.
You said they'd have to come in, Mike, anyway, for.
Yeah, I think. They were hence.
Yeah, it was the week we, I think.
Yeah, this all happened like in the last two months, because they, they put out a call for proposals and the proposals were due in August, and then they were gonna announce